Audio was on, so. Standby for Facebook. Okay, live on all our channels.
Hey, good evening, everyone. It's six o'clock, so I'm going to call to order this September 22, 2020 City of Gallatin Council Committee meeting to order. Before we proceed, I will read the Governor's Order which states pursuant to Executive Orders Number 163451 and 60 and the need to limit the community spread of COVID-19, the September 22, 2020 Gallatin Council Committee meeting will be held by electronic means. The meeting will be livestreamed to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of the council and citizens of Gallatin. And you will be able to see on your screen right now a way that you may join our Zoom meeting and/or if you are unable to do that, you can join by telephone and there are numbers there that you can call and instructions. And when it's time to for public recognition, Jeff will explain more about how to speak. So first of all, we need to have a motion to accept this.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept this electronic meeting. We have a, let's have a roll call vote, please, Connie.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fann.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
And Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Seven yeses, zero nays.
Okay, thank you. Next, Connie, would you please call our attendance roll?
Vice Mayor Camp.
Present.
Councilman Alexander.
Present.
Councilman Fann.
Here.
Councilman Fennell.
Here.
Councilman Hayes.
Here.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
And Councilman Overton.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Hey, thank you. Next on our agenda is approval of the minutes from September 8th of 2020. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion to approve.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second to approve those minutes. Do we have any discussion? The nun will have a roll call vote to approve those minutes.
Vice Mayor Camp.
Ah.
Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fann.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
The vote is seven ayes, zero nays.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, we have public recognition. This is the time in the meeting for people who are wishing to speak to the council to do so by calling in or by joining our Zoom meeting. According to our city municipal code, please remember that comments must address the issues and not individuals and to keep your remarks under five minutes. Remember, this is a time to voice concerns about the issues and is not a question and answer session. Jeff, do we have, oh, be sure that you give your name and your address before speaking, please. Jeff, is there anyone wishing to speak?
Yes, ma'am. And just a reminder, we don't have any cell phone callers, but if we do, you will use star six to toggle mute and unmute and star nine to raise your hand. You're using your computer, please mouse over the bottom of your screen and you'll see a raise hand function. And once you do that, then we'll recognize you. We do have one person who's raised their hand and it is Mr. Javance. Go ahead.
Good evening. This is Michelle Javance and I see that on the agenda tonight, you're discussing a bond for thirteen and a half million dollars and I wanted to know what that is going to be used for because that's a lot of money. So I hope that you will discuss that in detail tonight. That was my comment and Pascal also is here and wanted to make a comment.
Yeah, good evening. I'm going to address an issue. I'm not going to say names, but we're all going to know what we're talking about, about science and fairness regarding following rules and ordinance of the city. Some people took enough back there that they would support the Constitution of the United States and of the state of Tennessee and the charter and ordinance of the city and to demean themselves in their official capacity faithfully, honestly, and with due regard to the welfare of the city, to the best of their ability. So I want to thank Bill McCord and his team for trying to enforce and address the issue with the individual in question. But what I'm wondering is that when people take enough and don't follow the law or follow the route they're supposed to follow, what's going to happen next? How this body is going to be able to deal with citizens when they're going to come and say, hey, I'm not going to follow the law because this body is not doing it or some people there not do it. So I have an issue with that. Mayor, you said last week that, you know, everybody should play well together, but for that, everybody needs to be fair and everybody needs to follow the rules. And I really appreciate your comment, Mayor. I would like to, yeah, I see you smiling right now. I would like to, I know it's not a question and answer, but we all know what we're talking about. So I would like to hear what the ETC's officer of the city thinks about that and something I just saw today that now we have all kinds of sign popping up everywhere like cash for cars sign all over the city. And again, how do you expect people not to do that if the people who are supposed to enforce and follow are not following their own rules? And Chief, if you were here, I don't know, I want to thank you. I went to pick up one of my sign was removed by a kid probably doing a prank and kids will be kids. So hopefully that kid understands what he's doing and there will not be too many consequences. It looks like there was more ant of something because he took one sign of Sean, one sign of me, one sign of Robert Lee, sign of realtors and all that kind of stuff. So that's probably not that bad. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else, Jeff?
That's everyone.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Next on the agenda are Mayor's comments.
And I don't have anything this evening, just love everybody.
Thank you. All right. So we're ready to start our regular agenda and number one on the list is a community survey that was done by ETC Institute. Rosemary?
Yes. Hey, everybody. I'm Rosemary Bates, the Special Projects Director out of the EDA Office. And if you will remember, when you adopted the strategic plan, one of the goals there was to conduct a community survey statistically valid, random sample, objective survey. And that would create a baseline of citizen satisfaction. Early this year, the city contracted with ETC Institute to conduct that survey. And one of the reasons we chose ETC Institute is because of their vast experience with communities and how we could compare data to our peers. Also, they allowed for us to add categories specific to Gallatin that might not apply to some other communities. And we didn't have that opportunity with some other vendors who do this type of work. So again, it's the intention that once we get through this survey, do another one in a couple of years. Also, the survey system that ETC promotes allows you to do individual or one topic surveys over time. I won't get into the methodology of the survey. Ryan Murray will tell you all about how they did the sampling. I just want to say that the community actually responded very well, above expectations. And so I think we should be proud that people were caring enough to complete the survey. So now I'm going to introduce you to Ryan Murray. He is with ETC Institute. And Ryan, will you share your title and what you do there and then launch into your presentation, please?
Yeah, thanks, Rosemary. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and all the council members. I appreciate being here today. As Mayor already said, I'm Ryan Murray. I'm the Assistant Director of Community Research with ETC Institute. And as Rosemary kind of mentioned, we give a lot more options to our clients than some of our other peers. And really, the thing that we pride ourselves in is working with local governmental organizations. And that's exactly what we did here. We worked really closely with Rosemary to help develop a survey that really encompassed not only those benchmarking questions, those how do we compare, how are we doing questions, but also questions that are really unique to your community in general. The presentation tonight is really a top line, you know, overall, you know, big picture, kind of how we did. But we see ourselves more than just a consultant. We like to look at ourselves as partners with communities. Rosemary mentioned, you know, this is a baseline survey and really the idea is that we do the survey every couple of years. Some communities have moved to quarterly surveys. A lot of our clients do yearly surveys, but most common is every two years. And that gives a community an opportunity to digest the results, make some changes, invest in different priorities that we've determined that are high priority based on the results of the survey, and then kind of get another idea of how we're doing. So with that, I hope everybody can see my screen. I believe I've got three here, so I'm sharing one. Can everybody see my presentation?
Yes.
Great, great. We'll go ahead and get going. Since it's a close knit group, usually I do this in front of council and I'll kind of bring up some, some more issues with that and our contract and things. But because everybody's on Zoom here, feel free to stop me and I'll go ahead and answer any questions that we might have. And as it pertains to that, any questions that you all have after this presentation, please understand this is not the end of our relationship with the city. We're happy to answer any additional questions, run any additional analysis that might be needed to help you further interpret and understand the results. ETC is really a great partner. We're a national leader in market research. For the last thirty, maybe forty years almost, we've been partnering with local government organizations to administer surveys similar to this one. But really, the key behind our ability to be successful is our intuitive ability to help make these results useful. Academics can typically come in and do these surveys with similar or maybe even stronger methodologies. They can sometimes collect even more surveys than we've collected here. But their ability to relate these questions and these answers and the data to your day to day lives and to the decision makers in the city is really limited. And that's where our experience is really helpful. Today, we're going to run through the purpose methodology and some demographics. Bottom line upfront is really just kind of the big picture, how we're doing overall, you know, some of the things that I saw and some of the things that I think that you're doing really well with. We'll run through the major findings, some of our major analytical tools. I'll summarize at the end and then I'll open it up to any questions. As Rosemary mentioned, the survey is really, the purpose is to be objective. We do that by making sure the questions aren't biased or leaning towards one way or trying to get a particular answer. We ask some questions in different ways throughout the survey, but we don't ask questions in a way to try to draw a particular response type. The results are statistically valid and we'll get into that in just a moment, but basically because of a random sample of residents were responded. Another main objective is, as Rosemary mentioned, is to really compare your results with other communities. And that's where we stand out from the crowd of other consultants. Our ability to compare your results are not only just that we have a comprehensive database, but that we've administered all of the surveys that make up our database. So our results are comparing apples to apples and we're not finding third and secondary sources to kind of or try to compare your results to. Your results are being compared directly to surveys that were administered by us to other respondents. And what we do best is we help prioritize the findings. So we'll go through some of the important satisfaction analysis and really help you understand what respondents are saying and what's really going to improve overall satisfaction with the delivery of city services over the next couple of years. The survey was a seven page survey, which is our typical length for a community survey. It was the first community survey conducted for the city by ETC Institute. And we did this by a method of mail first and accompanied with a covered letter which included an online link to the online version of the survey for respondents who preferred to fill it out that way. About seven to ten days after surveys began arriving, we began email follow ups to respondents and then phone follow ups were needed just to collect a few of those other groups that didn't respond well to the mailed online survey. That's really where the statistical validity comes in. If you compare your results to the census results, within our margin of error of about four and a half percent at the ninety-five percent level of confidence, we are really well aligned with the census results. And that's based on race, ethnicity, gender, sometimes income is one of those ones that we can measure. But what's really nice here about the community of Gallatin is that our goal was 400 surveys. Like I said, we have about forty years of experience in doing this type of work. So when we sample for a community such as Gallatin, our job is to sample in order to receive a particular number of surveys. And we did that. But what was great to see is that the community was so thoughtful in the results and overall, the results are very thoughtful. And I'll go into some of that when we get into some of our analysis. But we actually had 125% of our goal. So we received 502 total surveys when our goal was only 400. And again, it's a social science, so there is some, some give and take there. But for the most part, when we set out to collect 400 surveys, we'll maybe collect 410 or 415. But to see 502 respondents respond to the survey is really great. The sample was a random sample of all potential residential addresses within the city limits. So what we do is purchase a sample from one of the leading list brokerage firms in the country. We take every single potential residential address based on the USPS list and then we select a random sample from that. And those are the folks that received the mail and online surveys. This is a location of survey respondents. As we can see, some of the map to the left is a little sparse, but there are not a lot of homes in that area, as you all probably know. So we had a great distribution from throughout the city. As you can see here, all these red dots just indicate households that completed the survey. But please understand, these results were geocoded, exact location, but we stripped that away and geocode these results before we deliver them to the city to their block address. For example, somebody living at 101 Main Street is going to be geocoded to 100 Main Street, somebody at 205, you know, Oak is going to be geocoded to 200 Oak. So these aren't the exact locations of the homes, but very close to where those respondents came from. The bottom line upfront is that residents have a very positive perception of the city. So the city's performing very well. Eighty-two percent of respondents indicated they're satisfied with the overall quality of life. And almost three out of four respondents indicated they're satisfied with the city as a place to raise children. So just kind of putting that into context, I know that seventy-three may not seem super high, but if you get four people in a room and three of them say, yes, I'm very satisfied with the city as a place to raise children, I think you've won that argument. So the gallows is performing very well. We'll look how those numbers stack up nationally and regionally later in the presentation. Some of the things that I was most impressed with was how you're setting the standard for the delivery of service in a couple of key areas. When we look at all of the trends data and all of the benchmarking data, you rated above the national average in seventy-two percent of the areas that were assessed and seventy-four percent when talking about regional averages. We'll go through some of those benchmarks later. The city rated twenty-eight percent above the US and the southern regional average. This was the same twenty-eight percent above for the overall quality of services provided by the city. So you're really just smashing, you know, some of our national benchmarks, which is really difficult to do because we have a lot of high performing clients who've been doing the survey for decades. And the city rated twenty-nine percent above the US average in the overall quality of customer service. So your customer employees, the employees in your community that face their customer facing or face residents are actually really just setting the standard. And I say this in a lot of communities, even if it's like fifteen percent above the national average, but to be almost thirty percent above the national averages, you'll see in one of the charts later on, is really just outstanding. Every single employee in the city of Gallatin should really get a pat on the back for, for this particular rating. Some of the top priorities for improvement that we found based on our important satisfaction analysis is the flow of traffic congestion management, which I always find is the top priority in a healthy community. If we were to see something like parks and recreation or something, you know, less shiny is the top priority for improvement, I would be very concerned. But the fact that folks are most concerned about track flow of traffic and congestion management in the city is really a sign that you all are doing well in so many other areas. The next one was quality of the city's planning department. And we should not be confused with actually the employees or the folks in the city's planning department. Ninety percent of the respondents to the survey likely have not had direct contact with your planning department in the city of Gallatin. This is likely a direct influence of decisions that have been made in the city. One of the high priorities for improvement or one of the items that received lower levels of satisfied ratings was how well the city's managing growth. We believe at ETC Institute that the quality of the city's planning department is being directly influenced by some of the growth and some of the activity when it comes to planning and development in the city. So please, when I talk about the top priority for improvement being the city's planning department, don't confuse that with the actual staff or the actual department itself, because more than likely, they're, they're carrying out orders from higher above themselves or decisions that the city's making when being counseled or things like that. So just please keep that in mind. And then the quality of city streets, another item that is a high ticket item. It's a high dollar value item. Sometimes communities have rolling street maintenance throughout their community. So a particular section might get fixed. If you live really close to that particular area where streets didn't get fixed this summer, you might rate that a little bit lower just because you noticed that Tom and Mary across the street got their street done, but you haven't quite gotten yours finished yet. So that's another sign of thoughtful results in a healthy community that we're not seeing some of these key city services at the top of this list. Overall perceptions. Overall, the city's performing very well. Over half of respondents gave satisfied and very satisfied responses to all four of these items that were rated, the lowest being overall value received for your city tax dollars and fees, which is pretty common. But to keep in mind, only sixteen percent of respondents gave dissatisfied or very dissatisfied remarks. Most of the charts that I'm going to present this evening, the blue items are satisfied or excellent, good ratings. Gray is always going to be that neutral. Anything in red is always going to be those negative ratings. What we should keep in mind is that that neutral rating is not a poor rating. Some communities who perform very low actually lump the neutral into their satisfied and very satisfied ratings. But like, the way that I like to interpret them is that it's a passing grade. Folks either didn't have a significant interaction with one of these particular items or the city's not making a great impression or a poor impression. So that's really just kind of that average neutral rating. So very low levels of satisfaction with all four items and relatively high when we compare it to the benchmarks for all four items as well. When recommending Gallatin, most folks recommend Gallatin as a place to live, visit, and conduct business. Again, a few neutral responses, but very, very low, ten percent or less, given our margin of error, even fewer number of respondents potentially or number of respondents in the city at large would be not likely or not likely at all to recommend the city for these three particular items. So again, very, very high ratings here. The overall quality of city services, this is a larger list, is kind of the whole kit and caboodle, everything that the city kind of offers at the major level. We do have a couple items at the bottom that received higher levels of dissatisfaction. Those are our top priorities for improvement and I'll let you know how we got to that later in the presentation. But as we can see, most folks are very satisfied or kind of neutral. As we see here, overall quality municipal court, forty-four percent of respondents were neutral. And that kind of leads back to what I was saying in the previous slide where most folks, if they're going to give that neutral rate, you're either passing or folks just haven't had a lot of experience with the municipal course. So that's why we see higher levels of neutral there. But overall, lots of blue on this chart, very good ratings overall here. What we did is, as I mentioned earlier, we geocoded the respondents' home address to each question on the survey. And what we do is we average those responses based on particular GIS shape files to help the city better understand how those responses are coming from different aspects of the city or different geographies of the city. What we see here is the overall quality of city services is a map of the city of Gallatin. What we find is that there are a couple areas that are neutral or dissatisfied overall, but for the great vast majority of folks, items are very satisfied or satisfied at the very least. One of the things that we offer, and I'll talk about later in my presentation, is an interactive data dashboard. One of the greatest features of that dashboard are the maps. This is really just a static map. You look at it and really you gain from what you can gain from it here. But our interactive maps that are available through our dashboard, you can actually hover over all of these areas and get a really good idea of actually the number of respondents. For example, that inner area, there might not be a lot of households there. That might be a more industrial area, but there were enough households to group them together. Even fifteen or twenty respondents from that area could have brought that down to a dissatisfied rating. So having those maps that are more interactive or a little bit easier to comprehend. But overall, here, the city's doing, you've got a few examples here. Overall quality of life in Gallatin. Most folks are very satisfied or satisfied with their quality of life. Overall flow of traffic congestion management, this was one of the top priorities for improvement. As we can see, there are some trouble areas. Most folks were neutral for the most part, but there were some, some dissatisfied respondents from throughout the city, which makes sense, given it's a top priority. Overall quality of the city's planning department, I would assume that if you talk to the planning department in the city, or if you talk to some of the codes folks or some of the folks that are in charge of managing and developing growth in the city, I would assume that some of these red or orangey areas, they could probably tell you what's going on in some of these areas. But for the most part, neutral, satisfied or a few areas of dissatisfaction here. Overall maintenance of streets, municipal buildings and facilities, this was the highest, the third highest priority item. Again, some neutral areas, a lot of satisfied areas as well. And the overall quality of police services, this item was determined to be the fourth highest priority on the list. And again, this is where I come back to the thoughtfulness of respondents and the fact that we have 125% of our 400 goal completed in surveys. Folks are very satisfied with the police department, but they think that it's very important that the city continue to maintain that police department. And this is proof here. Most of the chart is dark blue. There are some areas of light blue, but as we know, some of those areas aren't densely populated. So what we should understand here is that folks really thoughtfully took this survey and they were asked to include what their priorities for improvement are over the next couple of years. They chose police because they want the city to maintain the level of service that the police is providing to the community. So this is a really good sign. Benchmarks, really my favorite part of the presentation and the main reason for this is that the city performed so far and above most of our benchmarking that I talked to a couple of our researchers and you actually altered some of our benchmarks. So some of our benchmarks were further below this, but once we got you into the database later, earlier this summer, you actually kind of shifted the bar. So some folks are actually struggling now to, to even meet expectations on these benchmarks because of some of your ratings, particularly the overall quality of services provided by the city where you're almost twenty percent above the national average, ten percent above the national average and the overall quality of life in Gallatin. Then as we see here, how well the city is managing growth. You're significantly below the national average there. Although you shouldn't beat yourselves up too bad about it, the national average is less than fifty percent of respondents are very satisfied or satisfied with how well their cities are managing growth. So although significantly below that, we believe that is the main influencer and the main reason that the city's planning department kind of came under fire in the survey results. Again, not the employees in that department because it's unlikely respondents had any direct contact with those folks, but it's likely the, the growth and development decisions that the city has made over the last couple of years. Overall quality of services, again, a lot of blue arrows here. As you can see at the bottom, a couple of the areas where you're performing below the national average are again, those areas of top priority. These are areas that we would always assume in a healthy community, a thriving community, these are going to be the items that we should see at the top of the priorities list. And that's exactly what we saw here. I believe if I'm not mistaken, Rosemary might have mentioned that there was some flooding recently as well, which could directly impact this overall quality of this stormwater runoff and management system. But again, very close to the national average, only nine points below it, given our margin of error, four and a half, could be only about five points away. Street sidewalk and infrastructure, again, a lot of blue arrows, meaning you're significantly above the national average. Accessibility of street sidewalks and buildings for people with disabilities is slightly lower. Maintenance of stormwater drainage systems, a direct correlation to the previous chart that we saw, but for the most part, public works is doing very well, especially compared to our national or regional averages. Public safety, as I mentioned earlier, folks are very satisfied with your police department. They want you to continue to invest in that police department. And we can see that based on the ratings here. The only one that was kind of aligned with the national average and the regional average was that quality of animal control, but you are still significantly above the regional average for that particular item. Customer service, this is really where you shine and all of your employees should really receive some recognition for this particular slide. As you can see here, twenty-five percent above the national average for the help to resolve the issue to your satisfaction. That's just astounding. So frequently, residents will call the city and the person that answers the phone just, their hands are tied, either red tape or just particular city rules and they just cannot help that respondent. To see three out of four folks that answered this question say that they're satisfied is just really outstanding and something that we don't see very commonly. They did what they said they would do in a timely manner. Folks aren't waiting around to get Folks aren't waiting around to get things done for respondents and for residents. Prompt accurate complete answers to questions, and most importantly, they were courteous and polite, which really goes a long way in all four of these items. Overall ratings of the community, as a place to raise children, you're very high up there, but most communities perform pretty well with that particular item. But as a place to retire in a community that's moving in the right direction, receive very high ratings, significantly above the national average. Again, so doing very well when we talk about all of the benchmarks. And there's a few more benchmarks in the report, and we can develop some more benchmarks if somebody's more interested in some more comparisons. But for the most part, the city's performing very well, and you shall be very proud of how well the city's performing in all those areas. So priorities for investment, this is what I've kind of been alluding to the entire time. We've been talking about priorities. I've been mentioning our important satisfaction analysis. Really what that is not only the importance of an item, but the satisfaction with an item. If, for example, the overall quality of the municipal court, which is the bottom item on this particular chart, received very low levels of satisfaction, only two percent of respondents said that it's very important for the city to focus on that particular item over the next couple of years. So it's not wise for the city to invest more resources or to invest additional resources into fixing the municipal court, because it's not going to have an overall impact on general satisfaction with city services. The items that we want to focus on are the items that received both lower levels of satisfaction, below level, below average levels of satisfaction, and above average levels of importance, which some of those items that I pointed out in red arrows there are top priorities for importance, which are for improvement, excuse me, which means that they received relatively high levels of satisfaction, or excuse me, of importance and relatively low levels of satisfaction. And the only outlier here is police services. A reason it's an outlier is because three quarters of respondents indicated it's one of those important services for the city to provide. For those folks here that are more right-brained, this is kind of a list. This is how I prefer to review this information. This is our important satisfaction rankings. I like to color code things. It just makes it a little bit easier in a glance to look. The items in red and pink on this list are those top priority items. The item in yellow are one of those items that in our professional opinion, if we don't focus or maintain the level of service in this particular item, we could see it become a high priority in the future. Everything in green means that you're performing very well. It's relatively important to respondents, but it's not overly important, which means that we shouldn't focus additional resources for these items. By no means am I saying that everything in green should be stripped of resources. It just means that we need to maintain our current level of emphasis on these particular services. For those of you that are more left-brained, this is kind of a more easy-to-read picture here. I've got some something in my text here that I'm missing. But for the most part, what we're saying is that the items in the bottom right-hand quadrant are those items that are our opportunities for improvement, those items that we should focus additional resources on in order to improve overall satisfaction. Those items are above average importance, moving from left to right, and below average satisfaction, moving from up to down. The overall quality of police services, as you can see, is in that top right-hand quadrant. And again, just above and beyond satisfaction, which kind of puts it in that top priorities for improvement, but really that should maintain our current emphasis, ensure the police have what they need to get their job done. But those three items down there at the bottom right-hand quadrant, those are really our main focus, our main emphasis items in order to increase overall satisfaction with the delivery of city services. On to our next slide here. This is the important satisfaction analysis for street sidewalks and infrastructure. Quality of city streets, followed by maintenance of stormwater drainage and adequacy of street lighting in your community were really the top three most important items, followed by three items that we again believe could potentially become higher levels of priority if we don't maintain or continue to maintain the adequacy of sidewalks, cleanliness of streets, and the maintenance of city street traffic signals. Parks and Recreation, we had a number of items in the high priority list here, which was a little bit interesting, but that's because there was a lot of importance rated on each one of these particular items. So we have about five items, or six items at the top here, a few items in the middle, and then a number of items at the bottom. And then again, we don't want to decrease the level of resources given to these particular items, but no need to increase it. Really, the main one, restrooms at parks and recreation facilities, our owner always says that if that's your highest priority for improvement, then you're doing something right. If folks are, the most common complaint is going to be restrooms at parks. Really, you're doing a pretty good job because that's a tough one to kind of keep up with. And then quality and maintenance of city parks, just something that most folks in most high-performing communities are always concerned with. Communication, this is one of the things that I've focused on for the last few years at ETC. It's something that particularly is telling in communities that perform at a lower level than Gallatin has performed. But it's always important to ensure that the city is maintaining or keeping an eye on communication sources and how folks want to receive and share information about the city. So as we see here, there's a lot of neutral responses, meaning that folks just likely aren't getting a lot of their information from some of these, or they're not really focused on some of these items, and we'll see that in the next slide. But the availability of information about programs and services, you're not performing not well, you know, less than one out of five respondents gave a dissatisfied remark, but you're not performing overly well, meaning folks aren't very satisfied with this particular item. And that's really the case for all of these beyond the level of public involvement, local decision-making, which is one of those give it or take it questions. You know, communities aren't satisfied when the city makes a decision that they didn't feel involved with, but you know, the night that you had the vote on that particular item, there was one person in the room, you know? So it's one of those items that the city should really take a look at and kind of take it with a grain of salt, that particular level of involvement question. As we saw tonight, there aren't a lot of people on this particular meeting, but again, there are a few. One of the things that I like to focus on more is the sources of information that folks use to get information about the city. And as we see here, the top few sources are really not city maintained sources. So we would suggest that the city try to bolster or promote more some of those special messages on the water bill, city publications, and the city website. It's not that folks aren't using those particular resources, but if we were to make them more readily available, and I've been to your website, it's a great formatted website. I mean, it's one of the most up-to-date that I've seen for a lot of communities that I've worked with recently. So it's definitely not the dissatisfaction with the website, it's just the fact that folks are more dependent upon public broadcast news television, which we are seeing trends nationally, that Facebook and Nextdoor and those types of items are becoming really those main sources of information. What we see in more healthy communities, that the maintained and steady sources of information, if they're coming from the city, we continue to see higher and higher levels of satisfaction, and that's because the city's really putting their best foot forward and giving folks that information. So working with communications folks and how you can kind of bolster the website, make sure that more city communication is coming directly from City Hall versus Facebook or broadcast news television can be very helpful. The other side of this is to ensure that the city's Facebook is maintained properly and well, because it's difficult to get too into the weeds in the survey to determine, are folks getting their information about the city on Facebook from friends and family or from the city's Facebook page? And that would be something that we would want to maybe get into a little bit more on our next survey. But we want to make sure that if we are using social media as a city, that we're keeping it up to date, it's accurate information, we're responding quickly to folks when they're commenting on our posts and things of that nature. Awareness, most folks are not fully aware, or more so, fully unaware of these particular items, and that really comes directly from the fact that folks aren't getting their information directly from the city in our opinion. So that is something that I think we can really change the focus of this chart to be more blue than it is red if we focus on communication over the next couple of years. And what's really great is that the city performs so well that there aren't a lot of areas that the city really needs to buckle down and focus on too heavily. So communication is really one of those areas that you should be able to, over the next couple of years, try to try a few things, see what works, and really try to focus on improving communication, which in the long run is going to improve your overall satisfaction, because folks are going to understand that the city's taking a proactive approach to their responses to this particular type of survey data. So it's really important. In summary, the city performed very well. It's always great to have a presentation like this. I was supposed to be there in person tonight. I was going to try to actually go to Tennessee and Kentucky and knock a couple off the list. I like to try to hit like thirty or forty states a year. This year, I'm not even going to get close. I think I've been to four. So that's a little bit disappointing, but you've got an excellent group of respondents. Folks were really entertained by the survey, and they filled it out in great numbers, and that's always really great to see. Gallatin rated significantly higher than the national average in over seventy percent of the areas that were assessed, which is just really impressive. And the priorities for improvement, we've already kind of beaten those down. So one of the things that I wanted to mention tonight, and that Rosemary and I discussed, is that we've had a contract to come out to present the results tonight. There are just some fees, you know, general airline fees, staying the night, one night, rental cars, things like that. So it was quite the fee for me to actually arrive in the city this evening to present these results. And what we'd like to do in lieu of that, and I don't think I've actually discussed this with Rosemary, but what I'd like to do in lieu of that, if amicable by the city, is replace the fees for my onsite visit with the interactive data dashboard, which actually gives you a lot more ability to utilize this data over the next couple of years. If you do another survey, we use the same exact dashboard and add trend data. The maps are interactive. There's cross-tabulations, which means that if you have a particular question about correlation between two particular variables, you go in on your own, make those cross tabs, see how those relationships exist, or maybe they don't exist, and so you go into a different direction. The dashboard is a really helpful tool for folks who want to dig more into the data but don't want to wait on a particular data request from ETC Institute. So with that, I'll take any questions, and Rosemary and I can talk offline with the mayor or city manager or somebody about the dashboard and how we might, you know, in lieu of my onsite presentation, offer a dashboard of the city. But if anybody's got any questions about the results, I've got the full report here with me, so I'd be happy to answer any questions at this point.
Thank you, Ryan. I have one thing. When you mentioned we could mouse over the maps to find out more data, was, would that be on that interactive dashboard, or is there something else we can use?
Yep, yep. The maps that we've created for the city are in appendix, they're PDF, they're static maps, but in the interactive dashboard, the maps would be more interactive. So you'd be able to hover over them, see really what areas are answering what particular questions in what way.
That would be interesting to know.
It's very great.
Anybody have any more questions?
I thought it was a great presentation, Mr. Murray. Made me feel good about a lot of things.
Yeah, it really should have, and I've been to cities where it's really tough to make council members feel any kind of good, so you are very lucky.
Councilwoman Love, could I ask a question?
Sure.
Ryan, I saw the results of a lot of those things, and I'm not real pleased with that. I think it's a misrepresentation to show the planning department separate from the services that the planning department conducts, and I think that grossly misrepresents the activities that we conduct here. I realize that there's a lot of people in this community that are not happy with the decisions that are made regarding planning. I don't know that a lot of those are administrative decisions, and that's not reflected in this report.
Yep.
So I think the terminology, before you finalize this report, instead of singling out the quality of the planning department, and we're not necessarily, we're identifying the quality of services of other departments or the service levels of other departments as opposed to the quality of the department itself. So that needs to be corrected, I believe. Hopefully, I think maybe others might think the same way. There was also not a lot of questions asked about building and building provisions in the community as well, apart from planning, and that would be important too, I think, maybe tackle in the next go-round if there is another survey done in a couple of years.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you for those comments, and that is a difficult process because Rosemary and I, along with a couple of others from this, we went through a strenuous process to develop the survey. It went through a number of rounds of iterations, and unfortunately, we're limited to that seven-page limit. So some of those additional questions that you'd like to ask about planning and the actual services of the planning department maybe didn't make the cut, or there were other particular priorities that the city had at that moment. And again, keep in mind, we administered this survey a number of months ago. One of the things that we can offer, as Rosemary mentioned earlier, is that we did pull results for poll surveys. So if the city would like, we can run a poll survey online of respondents who took this survey, to ask them specific city planning service questions. I do understand those weren't on the report, and unfortunately, the wording as it was in the survey is the way that it is in the report because of that. We try our best not to make too many interpretations in the report because it is science, it is a data set, so we don't want to misinterpret or put words in other folks' mouths. So it is a difficult and a precarious situation that we're in with the way that that particular item was asked. But there are a few items that we can do to try to remedy that. The first would be poll surveys, and the second would definitely be amending the report, which Rosemary and I'd be happy to work with you and Mr. McCord to do that. And then the last one is to ensure that we have some additional questions or a revision to that particular language in the next iteration of the survey in order to compare those results directly. That's one of the main reasons that I focus so heavily on that particular item, is that we strongly believe that it's how well the city's managing growth had a direct impact on that particular item, but because of the way that it was worded in the survey is the way that we interpret it and presented it tonight. So I do understand where you're coming from. Thank you for your comments.
I'd like to say, I do think that that's accurate, that I think, you know, when most people saw those planning questions, it was about everybody's planning of the city, the council, the planning commission, developers, whatever. But it also is difficult because how do you evaluate the actual services of the planning department and distinguish between the two? But I think, you know, the great takeaway for all of us from this survey should be that we all owe our city employees a big thank you, because I really do think that they've done a beautiful job of serving our community, and the survey supports that. It makes me very, very happy, because I do feel like that that is some progress that we have made over recent years in that our employees really take helping our citizens very seriously, and you don't call the city of Gallatin and say, that's not this department, goodbye. They help them out, and so I really appreciate that that is well reflected in the survey, and overall, I'm pleased. Thank you. You did a great job presenting it as well, Mr. Murray.
Yep.
Councilwoman Love, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
As Ryan mentioned, one of the things that I was going to bring up, and I'm glad he offered first, is our contract still does have some funds in it, and because he wasn't able to travel, I would encourage the city to implement the dashboard. Also, there's a lot of information that is in the package of final deliverables, every single question and how people responded, and it's lots of pages of information. So that's going to be available too, and you can dive deep into every single question that was asked and how people answered that. I will send out what Ryan shared with you tonight. As soon as I'm done talking, I'll send it to the council and the department heads. When we have those longer lists and they are the final deliverables, and I'm sure that there's nothing that has to be revised or that they're final, then I will make sure that you have access to all that information as well as the department heads. But I would like to say, ETC has been fabulous to work with and very understanding of the circumstances and the months that we've been through with the pandemic, and I was very impressed with how they do their job, and I want to thank Ryan and his company for that.
Thanks, Rosemary. And if I may, I did forget one thing. I spoke to our owner, Chris Tatham, this afternoon, and he actually presented Shoreline Washington, which is a suburb just outside of Seattle yesterday, and we were very worried about how the results were going to look, considering that they'd taken the survey and implemented it just right before everything kind of blew up in that particular northwest region. And actually, the results were outstanding, and it's really confusing to us because we would have assumed that police would have been hit hard, feeling of safety would have been really hit hard. But what we're finding is that folks really aren't feeling that way in most parts of the country, and given that Shoreline is that suburb of Seattle, we had a few questions from council members and mayors about, are these results reliable anymore? You know, we took this survey right before all this happened, we took it right before COVID. And what we're finding is that cities are really stepping up and taking charge and delivering services in a same or even better capacity than they were before, and I think that this is really going to hold true here. And it'd be interesting to do a couple of those poll surveys, one for Mr. McCord to ensure that we accurately represent the planning department, but for two, just to get kind of a baseline on how folks are feeling about COVID-19 and some of maybe the civil unrest that folks are experiencing nationwide.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? I personally look forward to seeing that dashboard, because I'd like to find more information about each one of those areas. And like Paige said, thank you to all of our city employees, and it's great knowing that they are appreciated and that other people love this town as much as I do. I think it's a wonderful people love this town as much as I do. I think it's a wonderful place, and it looks like most everybody else does, too. But thank you, and thank you for that great presentation, Ryan.
Yeah, thank you, Councilwoman.
Hey, Rosemary, can I ask you one question? On that dashboard, if you dig deep into it, does it name the people that participated in this survey, like how they voted?
No, no. We, it's a random, objective survey. We don't want to know how Mary Jane on my street might have responded versus Sue Ann on your street.
I understand. I was just, I was just wondering about the 1%.
Will it, will it state how many people in each area responded?
Yeah, we can break that down by zip code and things like that, yep. And the dashboard, the maps will give you a really good idea of how many folks from each area responded to each question.
Anybody else? Okay, if not, thank you, Mr. Murray. We appreciate that. That was a really interesting and informative, good presentation. And we'll move on down to number two on our agenda, which will be with Zach Wilkerson. And I just love the way he names this little green man, but it's about our downtown crosswalks.
Yes, ma'am. Just wanted to continue the conversation from the last conversation about some alternatives to the little green men. And then also, I got some additional information that y'all requested about some of the maintenance and those kinds of things. Jeff, if you will, if you'll let me share my screen.
You should be able to. Let me know if you can. Yep, it's coming up.
Cool. All right. So last week, we discussed the option of putting in the in-road flashers on your screen. You can see that that's kind of what they would look like. And I did check with, I believe, one of y'all mentioned Lee University had them. I discussed their with their maintenance staff, any issues that they've had, and they've had them in for 13 years. And they were not aware of any maintenance up to this point that they've had on their system. Also checked with the City of White House, who's had a system in place for two and a half years. And they've had some issues initially that they attributed to poor installation on a couple of the flashers. So it seems like if they're installed properly on the front end, it sounds like they are pretty reliable, from what I can tell. Also, everybody had some different, I guess, questions and ideas on some other options besides the in-street lighting. And so I got some information, and I apologize, I emailed this stuff to you late this afternoon. I was waiting on getting some exact prices. But if you remember from last week, the in-road system was pretty expensive. And I'll break that down here at the end on what those costs are. But some other options that are out there is the, turn this video on, the lighted crosswalk signs. So we have those signs in place already, but we don't have the actual lighted version. So that would help bring some attention to the actual crosswalk by being illuminated when somebody's going to cross. So that's another option that's out there. And that can be combined with in-light system. Of course, it's a little bit more expensive, but that's one option. And then also, another option that was mentioned is what they call the RRSB, it's a rectangular rapid flashing beacon. It's pretty much a strobe that they mount on the actual sign. And I'll play that for you. So when somebody's about to cross, they push the button, and it starts giving that strobe look like lighting. With this particular system, so you have to actually get FHWA approval to do that. There's some hoops you have to jump through, and it's, you can't combine it with any other kind of system. And you actually have to have those strobe lights at all four corners of each crosswalk. So you end up with, for one crosswalk, four of those things. In our case, if you're looking at the, there's really five different crosswalks we're looking at, you'd end up with a bunch of those things. So with that particular system, I would be a little worried about in the downtown area with those things going off all the time. I would feel some business owners might have some issues with it. Now, that could be a key, an issue as well with the in-road flashers. But with that information, I do have those cost estimates, and I don't know if y'all have had a hundred of those. The, like I said, the in-street lights themselves, if we did the two crosswalks in front of the library, along with the two crosswalks in front of Swainy Swift's, and then the city hall crosswalk, which is on Main Street, the total for all that work would be around $132,000. The, just the flashing signs, which is the ones with just the LEDs around the actual pedestrian crossing sign, that's, that's your cheapest option. And all of those crosswalks end up at $34,000. And then the rapid flashing beacon in the crossing, which is the, the RRSB is the strobe light, lighted, around $84,000. And again, on that, there's some hoops we'd have to jump through, through FHWA, just to allow us to install them. I know they're out in several areas of the country, but they're specifically permitted through them. So that, I guess, if there's any other questions y'all have about the system, I'd do my best to answer them. I will say, FHWA and ETC is pretty specific on what you can put in. And I guess from a liability standpoint, we would want to stay in, or stay consistent with what they, as far as the number of lights and the location of them and everything, we want to stay consistent with what they're recommending. They're very specific on the color, the strobes, and also the in-road lights. They want it to be yellow. So that's all the information I have. And if there's anything else to answer, I'll do my best.
Zach, I appreciate the effort and the hard work you put in to get all this data for us. I really like the in-street lighting over all of them. Are there any funds or grant for safety that would assist in, in this?
Actually, in the process of finding some of this information, one of the sites I was looking at actually had a specific link to some grants that are available. I sent that information to Suzanne, who in our finance department, who specializes in grants. And we haven't had a chance to really get together and look to see if any would be applicable. But there is a chance, yes, that there might be some grant funding out there for it. That's something that I can work with Suzanne on to do some more research, to see what's available out there.
I appreciate it. The lights are like, are they embedded in the streets? Are there humps with the yellow caution?
Yes, sir. They are. You actually drill a hole in the concrete or asphalt, and then it's, it's embedded. It's a, there's a version that's snowplowable, and then you fill in all around it with a hard epoxy that sets it in there. I know the folks at White House said, once they were installed correctly, that they had no issues. And it's on a state highway that has a lot of high-speed, much more high-speed traffic than what they would see in the downtown area.
I think the embedded in the street looks a whole lot better than the signs.
I agree. And for me, I mean, I think that brings the attention to the road in that downtown area. Anything on those signs on the side, there's trees, there's benches, there's, that's the kind of stuff you're competing with, with it in the road, I think is, is the most effective and safest route for pedestrians.
Thank you, Zach.
Zach, I've got a question for you. Down in front of the library and in front of Swainy Swift, there's two crosswalks. Is it, would it half the cost if we just somehow combined those into just one crosswalk there, or only used one instead of doing this for both of those?
I mean, one of the things that does make it much higher cost than you would hope is because the way these are, the crosswalks downtown are designed, I mean, you have, you, I guess you can see on here, you've got a crosswalk there and a crosswalk there. And I'm not sure how you would really eliminate one another, but you, you have to treat each one individually, from all the ETC guidance that I've been able to find. Because there isn't many examples where you have two back-to-back like that, that are mid-block.
What about over by the library? I mean, one of those is right in front, is coming from the courthouse, isn't it?
Yes, ma'am. So I'm standing right now in front of the library. You have the courthouse to your right. And then, so you have the crosswalk right there, and then immediately after, another crosswalk. And
That's the one, is that one absolutely necessary? I mean, can't people just cross at this one that's in the front and then go over to the, to the courthouse without having to have a separate crosswalk?
I mean, theoretically, yes, you could shut off, close it off those crosswalks. Aesthetically, I'm not, I mean, that, it could be done. I'm not sure. I'd think about the best way to do it in a way that wouldn't look
Yeah, we'd have to rebuild that street, which I think you'd be looking at the same cost at that point, you know, if you took out the, took out that concrete, get away with the curbs. I think we'd probably be looking at kind of the same cost to remove a soft, a crosswalk as we would to properly light it, would be my guess.
Plus, if you move one of them, you still got to cross the street to go to the other side of the square, or to the courthouse, or wherever you're going.
Well, what I'm, it used to be there was only one place that you crossed a long time ago, and then you just, and then you went on up there to the, where the light is to cross. But, but if, you know, it looks like if you're going to have to redo all that, that it would probably be more expensive than just saving money on one of these systems anyway.
Yes, ma'am. And I will say, we spent significant amount of money to put these stamped concrete crosswalks in. The two that are there are the ones that were done within the last five years. It would probably hurt my feelings a little bit seeing them go.
I bet. Well, I think John D. had a great question about the grants.
I can definitely do some more research into that. And we've got kind of a hard part done as far as we know. I have a pretty good idea of what the costs are. And then I guess we have options of I mean, next budget year, or if we wanted to fund, say, these, I can definitely, if you'll give me two to four weeks, just come back to you after we find out some more information.
Well, I think that would be a great plan, if that's, if that's what everybody else is good with.
We had any instances where anyone got injured with what we have existing? Are we having a lot of complaints? What are the issues? And what are the main reasons we're going to spend this money?
I have not pulled any accident data. I do know that since the, the Green Men went in, which has been, I think, six years, that, because I used to receive several calls from pedestrians about how they felt they were about to be hit every time they crossed the road. And I can tell you, the minute the Green Men go down, pedestrians that cross that road regularly let us know very quickly. So I feel like the Green Men are effective. They're a nuisance, a maintenance nuisance, I'll say that. But they, from a safety standpoint, I think they're effective. Now, from a vehicular traffic standpoint, I think they, they do make it challenging for, to navigate sometimes. So I feel like pedestrian-wise, safety is, I mean, I'm not worried any complaints or concerns now. But from a maintenance standpoint, they are, they are an issue.
Paige.
Councilman Alexander, I think, is getting ready to retire. Do you think it would be good if he just stood on a corner with a flag and?
I'm trying to find out how much it costs a chicken crossroad now.
Um, I, I want to say that while we haven't had any real recently, I've consistently gotten complaints, particularly about the one intersection that's on the screen right now. The landscaping that has grown up in that area is kind of obscuring when people go to step into the walk. So as a pedestrian, you feel like you're stepping into a crosswalk. But if you're a car coming down that road, you don't see the person about to step out there at all. And so we've trimmed back some landscaping, and we've done that regularly trying to help that. But, you know, it's very narrow, and people are just kind of hidden when they're about to step out there. And so I'd say that one has been the biggest concern. The one beyond there would be probably the second biggest, and then the Swainy would, the Swainy Swift one would be the third.
I was
Probably the most visible one.
At that very, at that one, I stood there for, and watched cars just keep going as I was trying to cross one day, and another lady was trying to cross the other way that works on the square. And I said, I can't believe these people aren't stopping. And she said, it's, it happens every day that she has to stand there and wait. So I don't, I don't know if they're not seeing things or what. But I think it would be good to draw the attention to that crosswalk personally.
So do we want to get Zach to look more into the
Yes, let's do that. Thank you, Zach. Yeah.
Yeah, good job. Zach, thank you. That was a good presentation. Okay, we'll move on to number three, which is an ordinance amending the municipal code for buildings and building regulations, and Chuck Stewart.
Good evening, Council. This, this ordinance change is coming about due to the fact that the county, that the county has taken the planning region away from us now. So what we're doing is we're removing the planning region from our building permitting, electrical permitting, basically all of our permitting. But also notice in the fire prevention, it takes away our authority to, for any jurisdiction over fire access roads, fire lanes, and also blasting, which is one of our major complaints at this time. All is moved over to the county. They have the jurisdiction at this time. So we're removing it from our ordinances.
Motion to approve.
Have a second? You have a second?
Second.
Okay. All right. So any more discussion on that to move it on? All right. Connie, would you, I see no discussions, so would you take a roll?
Like this, Mayor Camp? Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fann?
Yes.
Councilman Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
And Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Seven I zero Nace.
Hey, thank you. Next is number four. And Rachel Nichols is going to talk about appropriating and correcting environmental service revenue.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. When we were preparing the budget earlier this spring, we had made an initial estimate of revenue collections for the Environmental Services Fund. And our first number, we went back and updated. And I did that within our software, but I failed to do that in the document that was presented to council when the budget was approved. So this is just fixing a clerical error that I made back in the spring when we presented the budget. This increases the environmental services anticipated revenue by $40,000.
Motion to approve for a second.
Thank you. We've got a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, see none. Connie, would you take the vote, please?
Okay, see none. Connie, would you take the vote, please? Vice Mayor Camp? Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fann?
Yes.
Councilman Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
And Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Seven I zero Nays. Okay, moving on to number five. Uh, this is also Rachel Nichols.
This is an ordinance, an ordinance to appropriate some revenue that we've received for some legal services. Um, and we just need to have that budget, uh, approved, put back in the budget.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Hayes and a second by Councilman Alexander. Any more discussion on that? See none, would you take the vote, please? Vice Mayor Camp? Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fann?
Yes.
Councilman Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Seven I zero Nays. Thank you. Number six is a resolution approving twenty twenty general obligation bond issue. Rachel?
Yes ma'am. Um, for approximately the past year, we've had on and off discussions of a general obligation bond issue. And we would like to move that forward, um, hopefully to have a bond sale in December. Right now, interest rates are really low and we anticipate we would get a good rate on this. Um, there are actually two resolutions in the packet. They were marked draft because I didn't have time to get them through our processes. Um, I emailed you the final version yesterday, but nothing changed other than having the um, resolution numbers added and then put into our format. The body of the documents stay the same. The initial resolution just authorizes, excuse me, the issuance of the bond. And then the authorizing of the sale is the more lengthy document that goes into the legal particulars of this.
Motion to approve.
Whoa, 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 whoa. Don't you wanna know what we're getting the financing for?
Yeah, really? When it is.
Mayor.
Rachel, did you, did Rachel send that out?
Um, I sent it, I sent the list out this afternoon.
Yeah.
But I have it where I can run through it with everyone. Um.
Okay, why don't you do that then, Paige?
Are we voting just to approve the bond right now or to approve the proposed items that defended?
We're, we're voting to approve the amount of the bond.
Right.
Then I think the mayor's gonna break it down what is for.
Yeah.
Now, I wanna talk about what that is because, you know, you all have the option. When you have the option of whether or not to do this, but you also have the option as to whether potentially to increase that dollar figure or decrease it. So, um, I'm gonna try and share my screen and hopefully find the right document to share with you all. And so, um, let's see, you're, you're seeing that now. Let me see how to make it. I don't know how to make it full screen, but, I mean, I think you can see it fine how it is. Um, so let me show you. First of all, this is what was proposed and this was some, come on now, change for me. There we go. Okay. Um, so this was kind of proposed, and I'll run through the list. Basically, a project manager for the bond projects, uh, city hall renovations, the downtown parking structure, which is the partnership with the county, um, a P three to redevelop downtown, um, fire hall number six, um, uh, parkland, um, uh, that parkland in the twenty nineteen purchase, that two point two million dollars. Remember that we have the option to reimburse ourselves, and I'll talk about that in a minute. Um, a clear view community building, skate park, lazy river, golf course irrigation. Um, the next three are the East Main property, the Franklin, um, property, including the addition that we purchased in the Langley Hall property. Realized those were all, um, preserved lands that we'd like to make improvements on at some point. Nat Caldwell, um, the police and fire training center, GHS baggage road, the Belvedere at Long Hollow Pike improvements, the airport road resurfacing and widening from Gregory Drive to State Route twenty-five, the South Water streetscape, um, the Blythe Street, um, resurfacing and widening, the airport road widening from one oh nine to Coles Ferry, Tulip Poplar improvements that would extend that street down, um, to back behind a few businesses there. The Smith Street widening, which would actually be part of the courthouse project. Um, Long Hollow Pike sidewalks, a lock four, um, multi-use path, and the, um, Town Creek flood improvements, which remember that's the part, that's the, um, that's the plan with the core to mitigate, um, Town Creek flooding. So, um, this is the recommended list that I'm proposing. You'll see what I've done is I've gone in and I've grouped some things together and not really picked and cho- chosen which roads, um, which sidewalks, which park projects, et cetera. But what I do have in here, and Rachel and I looked at what recommendations we're making, we really didn't feel like that much, um, bond va- uh, uh, project management was gonna be required mostly on the city hall renovations. Um, and so we only left a hundred thousand dollars there. City hall renovations, I put nine hundred thousand dollars. The downtown parking structure, I reduced it down to one point five. Um, I do not wanna finalize this bond issuance until I get something in writing from the county that has, um, a, a clear agreement between us that any of the improvements, i.e. the springs of the, the Smith Street widening that we do to support the courthouse project counts towards our three million that we have committed to partnering with them on. So what I did was I put that at one point five million, and then down below, you'll see where I did actually, um, specify the Smith Street widening at one million dollars. That still leaves five hundred thousand dollars outstanding. I do have in here that we reimburse ourselves for the parkland purchase because then we have that two point two million dollars that we can use for some of the projects that are not included in this bond, um, um, that are not specified in this bond issuance, mainly more infrastructure. Um, I did put five hundred thousand dollars in there for Nat Caldwell so that we can begin work on that project once we get approval from the core and are able to start making improvements there. Um, I put five hundred thousand dollars for the golf course irrigation. I put seven hundred thousand dollars in for the police and fire training center. Um, that won't get us very far, but it will at least get an outdoor range for the police department. Um, for roads, I did a, a lump sum amount of five point two. Um, in addition to the Smith Street widening for a million. The sidewalks and greenways, I put it one point two million, and then the stormwater at eight hundred thousand dollars, um, for that, for that Town Creek thing. Um, that's a total of fifteen million dollars, about five hundred thousand in expenses. Also in the workbook that I sent to you all, I did, um, spell out for you guys kind of what we're looking at with our existing debt. So this kind of shows the utilization over the next twenty years. And I wanted to remind you that we have a debt policy in the city that limits our debt obligation to five percent of our assessments. And so if we were to issue this, say at fifteen million dollars in debt, that would put us at, um, forty-two point six million in debt or two point seven five percent of our assessed value. So a little more than half of what our total debt capacity would be. Of course, debt capacity increases as our assessments will continue to increase. Um, right now, our capacity's at, um, seventy-seven million dollars, so. Um, that's the information. I'm happy to, um, speak more about any of the projects or hear any feedback or, or, you know, just interested in how you guys wanna move forward.
Mayor, I got one.
Okay.
Thing is good.
Linda, the, as you know, I wanna, I wanna get started on this lock four project. Uh, we've put this project off now for ten years, and I know we can't do the whole four million dollars. But I'm hoping that if we do the first phase of this project, that the rest of this project is gonna be developer driven because there's a lot of open land there. But from the bridge to the lock four park is part of that we're gonna have to do, and Nick and I've had a lot of discussions on it. But I really wanna get started on the first phase of this project. Um, so I hope we can find a way to, to get the first part of this project in there, so I wanna get started on it.
We've got one point two million dollars dedicated for sidewalks and greenways. And then, um, like I said, that two point two million will be freed to, um.
Invest.
It, big thing.
And you know me, I wanna, I wanna do all the public amenities and the, and the, and the parks and things that people will enjoy. But when you look at what our needs really are, and, um, I mean.
I, I feel like this, I feel like this greenway and this, this multipurpose path is probably one of the most used that we have in the city, once we get it built.
Yeah, I disagree with that.
And, and Nick says that we can do the first phase of this thing somewhere roughly about, you know, one point five, and Nick can chime in here if I'm saying anything wrong. But, you know, the bridge is gonna be the most important thing. And that part up to the park is, is the first phase that we've gotta do. And hopefully, once we do the first phase of it, you know, a lot of this other property's gonna be developer driven and we're not gonna have to pay for it. Hopefully that we'll get it done when that, all that property develops down through there that's, that's, that's open land right now. So once we get our part of it built, um, I'm hoping that that, uh, a lot of the rest of it will be developer driven. So I really wanna get started on that. How we wanna work it around there. Um, but I really wanna get started on this first phase of that project. We've put, we, we've done some preliminary work on this project about twelve years ago, and we put it off that long, so, I mean, I just wanna get started on that project.
And, and I do want this council to know that the department heads have not seen this at all until just now. So I imagine that some of them will have some feedback as well. Um, but I think you, I think you're getting, um, it's kinda like doing budget all over again. I had forty-four point one million dollars in requests, and I'm recommending this fifteen million dollars. Um, and as I said, you know, we have the option to borrow more if you so desire. Um, you know, borrowing money always feels really bad. Um, I, I personally hate doing it in my own life and certainly hate doing it as a city. But then when you look at it from the, um, from, from, you know, the long-term investment in our community, the interest rate and, um, inflation, that we're, you know, the sooner we can get these things done, we're actually gonna be saving money. Um, even with the debt issuance, so I, uh, I, I, I kinda, I've watched, you know, the state and their no debt for road policies and often wonder, you know, look how more, how much more expensive some of these projects have gotten over the years as they've tried to amass the money to be able to pay, you know, upfront for them.
Just look at the project we're doing right now on Alba Galton. We started that project versus what it's cost us to build it now. We'd build it back then, look at half the price.
Yeah, but the, the debt didn't cost you much as the inflation did. That's for sure.
Hey, one, one.
Go ahead, go ahead. I'll go next.
One question, Paige. When was the city hall building built? I should remember that, but I don't.
Seventy-four. And, you know, we've been doing a study here at city hall. And, um, so right now, we kind of know what our, our current status is, kind of, you know, the, the, what the load bearing walls are, what mechanical ages are, the, the condition of different pieces of the building. And what we're trying to get to is how this building might be reworked so that it's good for another fifty years, at least. Um, I believe that there's plenty of space in this building. It just needs to be reconfigured. What we, we have done is we've taken the existing offices that were built originally and just chopped them up. So no office in this building has good flow. Plus, every, um, office in this building seems to have a kitchen. We have a lot of public restrooms in this kitchen, I mean, in this, in this building. And then we do have, you know, the kitchen and dining room that are in the basement of this building. And so we know some things moving forward that we're gonna have to do if we go into renovating this building. Going to have to make it ADA compliant. We're going to have to have a larger, um, um, elevator put in this building, which is, you can imagine a large expense, and we're gonna have to sprinkle this building. So those, those things right there are going to be very, very costly. But, um, you know, we're, we're not gonna move out of this building and build a new building somewhere else. I mean, I, it's my opinion that this courthouse, that this city hall stays right here. Um, I'd love to see it. Well, I won't see it here, but I would love for future generations to see it here in, uh, the next century, so.
I'd like to say one thing, Paige. Uh, I'm glad to see Nat, Nat Caldwell Park on here, and I know you and I both have been pushing for that. And, uh, police fire training center, trying to get the police laws off the ground. One thing about Nat Caldwell, has somebody reached out recently to the four engineers? Has to see what we could do as far as a cleanup project or remove the driftwood or trimming the trees off Gallatin Road?
We, we have been talking to the corps since I came in office. And actually today, we just had a meeting because, um, we've been working with, um, some very, very smart and talented folks who have, um, designed a plan for Nat Caldwell that we are so excited to be able to take to the corps. We think it meets all of their, um, water associated missions. Um, we feel like it, 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 we feel like it's a plan going to, um, check all the boxes from a corps of engineer standpoint. Um, and for the city of Gallatin, it's going to create a wonderful, um, recreational opportunity and a far better aesthetic than is there currently. Um, but it is going to be so very expensive. And so we're going to have to figure out how, and we know that we have a lot of willing partners. I mean, again, you know, this is a conversation I've been having since I was elect, since before I was elected. Probably ten years before I was elected, I was talking to people about this. But, um, I know that there are a lot of willing partners. I think there, um, will be a lot of community support for this. And it's just, I mean, it's, it's, it's one of the things that I most want to see happen in the city of Gallatin because it is to me a gateway and it just, you know, I hate having a, you know, a, a, a lagoon or a swamp as our welcome to Gallatin, um, when it could be like the coolest thing you've ever seen.
Well, the pictures, the old pictures that we had of it from back in the day, it was a, it was a diamond back then.
Now, I can't wait till we, you know, finalize this plan and we're able to share it with you all and, and the, um, corps and the public because it, it, I think it will really generate a lot of excitement.
Sure it will.
So Paige, let me ask you, there's the sidewalk and greenway money. You're saying we can dedicate this one point two million to that lock four project?
I didn't say that, Mr. Overton. I said it's there for its consideration. And there's also that two point two million, but we're gonna have to have a lot of discussions about what, um, you know, where, where the needs are, figure out what kind of planning we're looking at on some of these things. Cause some of this planning, if it's gonna take five years, we're gonna be at that point where we're probably ready to issue more debt in five years. Um, and so Nick and I talked through a lot of the roads projects. Um, but at the very least, we also have funds here that we can be used, um, for matching funds, um, with any of the projects that we might get approved for grant funding.
Right, I understand that, but we've been planning this project for twelve years, so.
Oh, I got something to say about all of that. Money, first of all, I'm against going in debt, but sometimes we don't have any choice. Money is as cheap as it's been in years. So I'd like for us to look into, do we need to actually add to this for projects? We just mentioned city hall, it might be a good term. Ms. Nichols might wanna look at the budget. Uh, but while money is cheap, I think we need to consider that if we're gonna go in debt. Maybe go in a little more debt for certain projects instead of putting them off.
The city's gonna be now or later, but one thing about right now, it seems like it's a good, uh, interest rate. Uh, that whatever project that we are really gonna develop all my interest in, it should certainly be a lot cheaper. And it's gonna get more expensive the longer we wait on some of these projects, so.
It was. Yeah, yeah, you're right. But, um, but I also, you know, worry about the capacity of our engineering and public works department, and, and obviously some of these things won't be the burden on them. But what I would like, um, you know, and, and you guys can continue to discuss and offer feedback, of course, but, um, I'd really like to have a conversa- more conversations with certainly Mr. Tuttle and probably, uh, Mr. McCord to kind of, you know, kind of flesh out these thoughts, see how they respond to this and if they have, um, you know, i- 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 if they think that it's worth adding dollars in, that we can execute projects in a timely manner and, and that it would be worth that. What I don't wanna do is, um, borrow money and it sit there for five or ten years unused. You know, that's just.
Mayor, I appreciate your hard work on this. We've been talking about this a long time, and I know this is a hard decision, but I appreciate it.
I mean, i- 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 it, it, it's hard and, you know, the department has really done the hard work on it. But it's also really exciting because, um, the city of Gallatin is in a very strong financial, um, um, status, and we will continue to be. And this is the method through which we can invest. And this is the method through which we can invest in our community and make a lot of great improvements. Um, and our taxpayers should just be able to enjoy the improvements and not feel economically burdened as a result.
And you hear a lot of people talk about infrastructure, I mean, this is what we have to do to get our infrastructure that we need, so.
Well, well, it's interesting to look at this list after we had that, you know, community survey presentation. Um, it kind of made me, um, you know, feel good about what I knew I was about to show you because these things do the things, a, 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 a lot of these things do the things that people are concerned about. Um, help with our traffic flow and stuff. And, and let me say to, um, Nick Tuttle, our, 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 our.
City engineer.
I know, I'm, I'm trying to come up with the word for the stoplight, the, the signal program, I T S, the Intelligent Traffic Signal System. Um, it is going to get done one day and, and I do believe that that's going to improve our traffic flow in our city. And that is funded, so, um, you know, there are improvements that are already funded, that are in pro, in progress, um, that we will see, but we're trying to plan for further down the road.
So, we don't want to vote on these tonight and put a dollar man on there until we really finalize some more of this stuff, right?
Yeah, we, if you so desire, you could move it forward. And, um, and then we could discuss further and then we could always, um, if you didn't want to vote on it next week, we could, or actually, it's not going to be next week because we don't have a meeting next week. But say you didn't want, vote on, if you still aren't comfortable with the next council meeting, then you could, um, you know, defer it to the next council meeting, we could talk about it on a work session, it's up to you all.
We can amend, we can amend the figure on it up, up until we vote on it, we can amend the figure. Like you said, we don't want to make a final determination on a figure until we get the courthouse situation, the parking garage down pat. So, we can put whatever figure in there, but there, but there's an opportunity for us to amend that at some point.
I'm, I am not comfortable with us issuing debt for that agreement with the county until we have something solid in writing.
And I agree with you on the program.
Definitely.
They're moving that forward, so hopefully we'll.
They are, um, but, but you know, all we've had at this point is conversations. So, I just want to, um, you know, make sure that we have a firm agreement.
Well, I make a motion, we move the bond issue on for, for council.
Work session or council?
Well, we can move to the next work session, I mean, it's up to you guys.
I'd prefer work session.
Work session's fine, we can put it back on for the next work session.
And are you, is your motion to leave the total amount to be decided upon, or?
Yeah, we'll decide that at the work session, that's all we're doing, just move to the work session, so.
I'll second Jimmy's motion.
Okay, so it's got a, a motion by Councilman Overton and a second.
One, one of, one of, Ms. McCully, can you come on and fly in?
Yes.
Are we just making a motion to table it and have what be the proper motion instead of voting on it, it's like we're trying to vote on it?
Yes, you could just table it till the next work session.
I mean, we're, we're making a motion, move it, it should be a table motion is what it should be.
I want to ask one question before we move off this topic, if that's what y'all prefer to do. I don't know if, um, Ms. Nichols wants to weigh in. Do you think that we can still be on track to, um, getting it done by December, Rachel?
We postpone it once, yes, but if it ends up being postponed again, then we would not be able to have the sale in December.
Okay.
The state requires a, I think it's a 21-day waiting period after we approve the resolution and before we could go to the market. And then we'll have to also schedule the rating agency sometime in between. A lot of people have idle money that they want to invest before the end of the calendar year. And that's another reason we anticipate really good rates. Um, so, we could defer it one time, but if we deferred it twice, I think we would probably miss that window of opportunity.
So, we'll make a, we'll make a decision next work session, hopefully.
Okay, so, uh, I was just about to ask if there was any more discussion for that. And I don't know if this is even still included, but I was just asked about an hour ago to state that the administration of Gallatin High School is strongly opposed to the addition of that baggage road. So, right now, we have a motion and a second to, I'm not even sure what.
Tape, to table it at this moment, until our next work session, that's what we vote on.
So, okay, so, um, to table this until our next work session, so, do we still need to vote on it?
Susan, we don't really need to vote on it, put it on.
Really doesn't need to vote, if, I mean, there's really nothing to vote on, you're just going to bring it back to the next work session. Typically, you don't vote when you are bringing it just to another work session.
Okay, so, excellent. All right, so, thank you Paige, let's go on and Rachel, and let's move on to number seven, which is about the Fire Station Five flooding and water intrusion, Nick.
Good evening, uh, this is Nick Tuttle, the city engineer, and I do have Lance Wagner in the room with me, our stormwater utility manager. We'll also include, um, Ms. Susan Heimacali in this discussion. I think she'll kind of close things out for us, but, uh, kind of helping to speak on, on Chief Victor Williams' behalf. Um, I know you guys have some awareness of what's, what's been going on there at our new fire hall, uh, number five. It's at the, the intersection of, um, Nichols Lane and Clear Lake Meadows Boulevard. And I'm trying to, to share, um, PowerPoint with you guys, I hope that it's coming through.
We can see it.
Now, okay, great. Um, so, are you seeing, are you seeing the, the first sheet, the opening sheet here?
Yeah, I see it.
So, I'm going to go to, uh, a couple of videos, uh, to give you all an update of, uh, kind of the, the flooding issues that we're experiencing out there at Fire Hall number five. And, and while that's going through, let me see if I can turn down the volume, I don't think we need that. Um, we've got one video is, Lance is saying I'm not coming through.
There you go.
All right, excellent. Now, let me see if I can fill this volume, I'm not sure if I know how to do that. Well, I guess we'll just listen to the rain, if that's okay, it's kind of soothing. Uh, this is, um, the first video is, is, uh, the downstream neighbor. And, um, she's showing a video and some stuff is coming across Nichols Lane. But she looks upstream to the fire hall, um, and shows what's, uh, overtopping the, uh, driveway there and coming onto her property from our fire hall. Uh, and then the next video that you'll see is actually, uh, from some of our firefighters there at, uh, the, uh, Fire Hall. And, and these aren't just, um, extreme events. Um, we've seen this at least a half a dozen times since the fire hall was opened last year. So, just wanted to, to share with you that we, we have some significant issues, um, within our own building. And then we also have some significant issues, uh, that we're contributing to uh, downstream of us, this is from the fire hall itself, that front door there, uh, that you walk into. Showing the overtopping of the, uh, the drive. Um, and, and, uh, the firefighter does turn and, and show you some of the issues that are actually at the door that have been mitigated somewhat by, um, some temporary measures just to try to protect our, our investment. But, uh, but we have, we've actually enlisted the help of, um, a designer, um, to, to try to come up with a solution to fix the problem. And, um, they have, um, come up with, with some, some ideas and some things there that will help us get this done. Um, at this point in time, the estimate on that is anywhere between, uh, $200,000 and $250,000. Um, as of, as of this time, obviously, the city, um, isn't planning to pay for this. Um, although we may consider, uh, trying to push this project ahead so that we can, again, protect our investment and also try to protect against the downstream property owners that we have. Um, uh, right now, um, you know, we, we contend that, uh, the, the issue, obviously, that was created was done either through construction of the fire hall by the contractor or, um, by, um, for design by the designers that we had that designed the fire hall. And so, at this point, I'll, I'll pass it along to, um, Ms. Heimacali to, to kind of talk about, um, where we are there, um, with, with some legal action. And, um, and we may want to consider, I don't know, she may advise tonight, um, going ahead and moving forward with trying to get some of these fixes, um, in place um, based on the, uh, the design that we have already, um, ready to go.
Okay, I will take over. So, during the actual, um, when the fire hall was completed, not shortly thereafter, we had the first major event that I am aware of. And from that time, we have been meeting, uh, several department heads, we've been meeting as a team to try to rectify the issues. We've been in contact with the architect and with the contractor. And we have not been able to reach any type of a resolution. We have, um, sent, we've retained some consultants to help us to figure out exactly what the issues are. We do believe they are design and/or construction defects that are no fault of the cities. In your packet, you'll see a letter on June 15th of this year that the mayor sent to the architect and to the contractor. And also in your packet, you will see the responses. And basically, the response of each of those, uh, entities was that they're pointing the finger at the other entity. And neither are willing at this point to, um, assist in any way monetarily to help us with that. So, what we are, uh, we do have a duty to mitigate. As you can see, we are causing issues downstream, we're causing issues to our neighbors. We do have a duty to mitigate, we've tried to accomplish that in the most economical way possible. And, um, it helps most of the time, but as you can see, as of, um, the last event, which was just a couple of weeks ago, we are still having water intrusion both to our building and to our neighbors. So, we are trying to continue to request assistance from the architect and the contractor. And, uh, if we cannot resolve this amicably, we will be forced to litigate. I do think we have a duty to mitigate and, um, our team is still working to figure out how, where we start with that and how much money it would cost. Of course, if we have to litigate, then all of that would be, hopefully, uh, whomever is determined to be at fault would be liable to us and we would be paying for that. And I know that, um, we don't want to get into protracted and long litigation because we need to get this resolved. But at, as of right now, we are not just getting any, um, responses that are desirable from either the architect or the contractor. I will say that, um, the architect, the contractor and the stormwater designer, I don't know if that's the correct term, Nick, but they all have retained attorneys. So, we are at least moving in the direction where they know that we're taking it seriously. And, um, we've had the stormwater design come out and take some pictures and at least inquire about that. Um, but that's where we are, we are going to try to have one other, um, agreement. It's called a tolling agreement that's been sent to the interest, to the parties. What a tolling agreement says is that we would like to try to resolve this with you without going to court. And during that time, that would toll, um, our statute of limitations. We are not running upon a, a statute of limitations issue, but this would just extend it for this city. I don't have a lot of hope that they are going to be willing to do this, um, but that's, that's currently where we are.
Susan, I think we need to move this thing on, I, it's obvious by looking at the letters and stuff that they're, uh, neither one of them going to give an inch. So, I think we need to move it on, let's resolve it.
And it needs to be done soon.
Protect our investment and our neighbors' investments as well.
These neighbors out there struggle from day one since this has been done. And I was there when this thing was first built, the first time they had flooding on it, and it's, it's not right. So, we need to move on and let's resolve this thing.
So, what, what I would recommend that we do is to try to come up with a, um, a budget and kind of a cost benefit analysis to see, um, what we need to budget for this litigation. And we would have to hire experts and a lot of, um, we've already hired some consultants. But that would be my recommendation and we.
We can reimburse that if we win a lawsuit, correct?
I'm sorry?
If we win a lawsuit, we'd get reimbursed for most of that, correct?
Theoretically, yes, but I, you know, when you go into litigation, you're never guaranteed, yeah.
What was the cost of the remedy to solve the solution right now?
They said $250,000.
Okay.
Correct. Yeah, that's what, um, the designer that we've had onboard on our side, Neil Schaefer Incorporated, um, was estimating anywhere between $200 and $220,000.
Okay, let's move on with it.
Let's move on with it.
All right.
You can do that.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you, that's a shame. And the last item on the numbered agenda is, sounds fun, it's about the, uh, Fourth of July fireworks for next year.
Next year, a little early.
Here's, here, here's the deal, the Fourth of July next year falls on a Sunday. And so, the question's been asked by the company, do we want to do it on a Sunday? I say yes, I know we've done it on a Sunday in the past, back when I was with the chamber. We've always done it on the Fourth of July. Fairview and Hendersonville do theirs on the third. But wanted the council to think about it and discuss it and give feedback.
I think so, do it on Sunday.
Do it on the fourth.
Do it on Sunday.
Yeah, we need to do it on the fourth, the Fourth of July.
Yep.
Well, I am so glad we all think alike on something.
I think we've got more person issues than the Fourth of July.
Yeah, me too, I know it, I'm like you, John.
Great, so, Fourth of July, Fourth of July it is. All right, thank you, that concludes the regular agenda, is there any other business from the council?
I do have a road closure. This is for the third of October, it's on Saturday, at Cemetery. This is the, um, annual cemetery tour fundraiser for the Sumner County Museum. So, we would be closing Cemetery Avenue from West Smith to West Winchester and, um, at West Bledsoe Street. And the time would be 2:00 PM until 10:00 PM.
Mark, zip route.
Second.
Okay, so, we have a motion, a second, any other discussion on that? That's the ti, that's just like every year, right? No different, okay, do we need to vote on that?
Technically, yes.
Okay, so, Connie, to call them.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Van.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Seven Eyes Zero Nays.
Okay, thank you, any, any other business?
I got one thing, one, Linda, I'd like to say real quick, Bill, over on Blackshear Drive, we had that lady about the fence, Ms. Devian Huntsman. Did we ever come to a solution on that or, or what are we supposed to discuss it again?
No, I thought she might be on here tonight, but apparently not. I've described the situation that she faces and, uh, uh, what she's gotten herself into. But, uh, we have not taken enforcement action on her yet, pending, uh, direction from the council. Uh, thought that you'd probably be on here tonight, but, uh, we can contact her and get her on the next, uh, committee meeting, if we can.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Her, her.
Wait, Jimmy, I'm sorry. I'd just like to put it on next committee meeting so we can get this thing resolved.
Let's do it.
I'd like to go ahead and weigh in because I know Mr. McCord, um, described, you know, exactly what had happened. But, you know, I've met with the lady and I do think that there is some validity in, um, having some opportunity for homeowners to buffer themselves from commercial property because very rarely, but in this instance, they actually, she is actually up against a commercial property that when, when it became commercial, they weren't required to buffer between. So, I, I, I see that that makes sense. And so, that would actually allow for her fence to be higher between her home and the business. And then the other issue is the fence between her and her neighbor. And I believe that she is willing to turn that fence around so that the, you know, more aesthetic side faces the neighbor and to shorten that so that it is compliant.
Our thanks, you're going to put pickets on the other side of it to solve.
That's right, oh, that, yeah, that works too. But, but regardless, I mean, she's willing to make concessions, but I totally get the perspective of giving the homeowner the option of protecting, you know, their, their, separating themselves from adjoining commercial. themselves from adjoining commercial.
Absolutely. Leave that to.
I would like to see us get that scheduled for her as well.
Okay, we'll put it on the next work session.
Anybody else? Okay, how about department heads? Anybody have anything they want to talk about?
Ms. Love, I do. This is Nick, this is the engineer. Just very quickly, we did open bids on a project, and this is a, a department head report. And please let me know if you have an objection to the way I'd like to proceed, so somewhat of a question as well. We opened bids on a, our Safe Routes to School project for Rucker Stewart Middle School, which is a sidewalk and cross, signalized crossing that, that goes from Rucker Stewart Middle School to Lock Four Road. And the, the bid exceeded our, our, our amount for our matching fund within the grant that we have. And I, I have, it just exceeded it by about $20,000. In between a couple of other sidewalk funds that I have, it would be less than $10,000 to our budget. Just one thing to understand, though, with these bids, it's all based on the quantities that will be placed. And so this, this bid certainly, or the product certainly has the opportunity to come in and be cheaper than that. And so I, I'd like to have permission just to move forward with the, the contract as is. And if the funds do end up exceeding, I would come back to you later to look for an appropriation to, to remedy that and make it right. But otherwise, we'd have to reject all bids here, rebid the project after we, we take some things out. And it would just, it'd slow, slow the project down, and I'm afraid it could even derail it. So I think our best option here is to, to move ahead, knowing that we have, likely have enough funds available in, in the existing accounts that we have. But worst case scenario is more like somewhere around $10,000 that we would be needing to, to, to come up with. And I'm sure that there will be some other products that will, will come under, some will go over. So it's one, it's one of these that I'm not worried about, really.
You need to, you need us to.
Motion to proceed.
Yeah, second.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Anybody else have anything to say about it?
And Nick, you said the worst case scenario would be it wouldn't exceed $10,000?
That's correct.
In addition to what we already have?
Correct, yeah. The rest of the money is already budgeted specifically for the project.
Okay, I'm, I'm ready to vote.
Okay, well, let's call for the vote then.
Vice Mayor Camp.
Ah.
Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Van.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Seven Eyes, Zero Nays.
Thank you, Nick.
Okay, thank you. Is there, are there any other department heads who have anything to bring before us? See, none. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I want to say one thing.
Motion to adjourn.
I thought either James or Nick was gonna bring up Gateway. No?
Obviously not tonight.
Mayor, you're right. I was just gonna mention, and I didn't think about that, just mention that we were looking to bid that project in the month of October with the bid opening on October 22nd. So you, you may see that advertised. That's the Gateway Drive extension in, in regards to the Facebook project. So come on, back on out the Hartsfield Pike.
Correct.
So move, moving forward with our obligation with, with Facebook there and that contract that we have with them.
Mayor, one other thing, are we still on Zoom for October?
And we are through that first meeting, remember?
Yeah.
Right.
Because of the dangerous building hearings that we're doing at that meeting. So we're going at least to that first meeting. We can make that determination at that next, at that meeting if you so desire. We are allowed, you know, by state law to do that if y'all want, but it's up to you guys.
What do you mean we're allowed? We, we can do October Zoom meeting also?
Governor and Lee, we do meet the qualifications to continue meeting electronically through the end of this, end of October at this point.
But we can decide that at, on, at the next meeting, Campy.
You can.
Yep.
Mayor and Councilwoman Love, if I might, I would just like to report that we have received four complaints about blasting out of Project Woolhawk. All of them have been addressed. At least conversations have been made with all of the folks that have had lodged complaints. One of them has had a sensor placed in their backyard, and the rest of them have been addressed directly. So if there are continuing conversations, please call my office. Project Woolhawk has asked my office to address those specifically. The calls have come into Chuck Stewart's office, and he has forwarded them to my office. And that has just been the, the way we'd like these things to operate. So if those conversations continue, please contact my office.
Okay, thank you, James.
Thanks, James.
And James, you'll keep us updated on those, correct?
We will indeed. I'll send out an email indicating the conversations I've had, the calls that have come in, and the conversations that have been had with those people.
Okay.
Great. We already have a motion to adjourn. We have a second?
Sorry.
All right, so no discussion, let's adjourn.
Bye, y'all. Y'all be careful.
Thank you.
Night, everybody.
Have a good night.
Go home, eat some chicken.